This conference will now be recorded.
We thank Port Orford and Sixes for Revia.
You're up. All right, good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you to Port Orford for inviting us in this. This is a great room. This room is better than our room.
Yeah.
I wish we had that. Yes. So, but thank you. We really appreciate. We really appreciate you accommodating us. And it's really good to see a nice turnout tonight. I was hoping we'd get a lot of people. So before we start the official meeting, we are up and running. We are recording. We will be posting this later on the website. I just want to go over a couple of kind of ground rules for our meeting. And first, I'll start with what type of meeting we're having tonight. So many of you were probably at here at the last meeting when we had on this topic. And this meeting is going to be a little different tonight. Tonight's meeting is a workshop. So typically what we do at a workshop is we're here to listen. And we're here to listen to proposals, listen to information, listen to what the public has to say. And then we'll make a decision. We won't make any decisions tonight. We will make a decision at a later date after we hear information. And at tonight's workshop, Ashley is here tonight to present information. She's put a lot of really hard work into this. A lot of, a lot of time has gone into her presentation tonight. I've spoke to her a couple of times and, and we definitely appreciate her putting the work in. So we're going to do things a little bit different. Ashley's going to present her information so that all of you can hear it. And then we'll start taking public comment because some of Ashley's information may impact what your public comment would be. And we'd like to, we'd like to hear, like to hear that. So tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, these slips are right here at the table. Please fill one out. And then when we call public comments, I'll, I'll call them as Natasha has handed them to me. When you come up to the microphone, you'll get three minutes of time. In fairness to everyone, please state your name and your address because Natasha has to keep track of that. And we, we want to make sure that we're, we're documenting everyone who speaks tonight. When you speak tonight, I would ask that you be respectful of everyone here. Sometimes we can get passionate on some of these topics. And you don't have to like us. You don't have to be nice to us, but please be nice to staff. Our staff works very hard and please be nice to Ashley. She's worked very hard on this too.
And you can be nice to us too.
We've seen that. I've, I've seen this in a lot of our meetings now. We get kind of rolling on a topic and then I'll see someone raise their hand or, or kind of gesture to me that they want to talk or make a comment. We're not going to call. We're not gonna, we're not gonna call on, on those folks to do that. So again, I really encourage you, if you want to make a comment tonight, please fill out a form. Now's your last chance before we get started. If, if anybody hasn't filled one out and would like to fill one out, please do so. Last chance? Right on the, right on the table. At the last meeting, if you guys were here, there was a lot of interaction kind of going back and forth.
There's a pen right there too, if you'd like to.
Okay. And there was a lot of kind of, it was more of a town hall meeting that we had last time. And, and I want to make sure that we're following the, the state's public meeting rules and guidelines. So when we have a workshop, we're limited about how the interaction can be. So we're, we're mainly here to listen tonight. Once we get that last form, we'll, we'll get started. There is also agendas out. If you haven't seen the agenda. On the table as well. Can you just grab that last one? Thank you, ma'am. One more Natasha. All right. If there's no one else, then we will officially start tonight's workshop. And I would ask you to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first on the agenda is Ashley and her presentation. Now she gets as long as she wants tonight, so no hurry.
Okay. I want to thank everybody here for coming, for your interest in this project. It is very important to the residents on Airport Road. I see a lot of you over there, my neighbors. For those of you who don't know, my name is Ashley Moore. I have lived in Sixes pretty much my whole life. I am a resident of Airport Road. In this proposal, I will be highlighting two main components. Teacher housing in association with the 2 CJ school district, as well as restoration versus reforesting of the land with educational outreach for students and possible future trails and an interpretive walkway. When considering what to propose with the county land at Highway 101 and Airport Road, we must first talk about what is possible or even legal. Many viable options were ripped from us when the previous commissioner's decision to destroy first and make a plan later has left us with more limited options and as well as a disgruntled populace. Moving forward, I have done some extensive research into what can logistically and realistically be done. And I would like to present what I believe is a good solution for both the county and the residents of North Curry. A little background, as you all know, two separate areas of the same parcel were clear cut. One to the south of Airport Road, which is roughly 25 acres. And the other to the north side, which is roughly five acres. The numbers do vary depending on which source you use. These sections moving forward will be referred to as the north section and the south section. Zoning of this property is set at public facility, which does carry some limitations with it. The zoning along with septic concerns will limit some of the wonderful, as well as the outlandish ideas that were put forth by the community, but I will address some of those towards the end of the proposal. Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, is strict about what kinds of systems that it will allow in certain areas. The south section does include a very large marshy wetland type area and an active creek, which makes the setbacks extend even further. As an expert in the septic industry, I know a very large commercial septic system would be required for many of the ideas, the larger scale ideas that were put forth. And obtaining DEQ approval for these would be difficult, if not impossible. The north section would be better suited for septic as the creek isn't on it and the wetland may not extend as far. Another contributing factor that our citizens need to consider when proposing ideas to the county is that our county is facing a grave deficit, somewhere in the realm of three to four million dollars, from what I hear. This obviously restricts how much the county can contribute to this project. Now, as a firefighter of over 20 years, Gorse is absolutely on my mind for this area. It is on the mind of every resident within a five mile radius. It is on the mind of everybody in North Curry County. As this summer, this past summer has shown us, wildland fires are not going anywhere anytime soon. And Gorse fires are some of the fastest spreading hottest burning wildfires that I have ever experienced. The dangers of Gorse are overwhelming, not to mention the detrimental environmental impacts that this noxious plant poses. We must be diligent in keeping the Gorse down to protect the environment and to protect the citizens of the Sixes District and beyond. Our utmost priority in all of this, however, which should be an easy decision for all of you, is the safety, the needs and the welfare of our children. This property is located maybe 100 yards away from Pacific High School. And we have a staunch responsibility to protect them and make sure that everything we do regarding this issue is in their best interest. This decision, your decision, affects our students and will do so for years to come. But how it affects them is up to you. We should all elevate this fact to the forefront of our minds as we proceed in making this decision. For the presentation, I will be going over four key aspects. One, the bare minimum requirements of the county for the, for this property as it sits right now. Two, the two separate ideas for the south and north sections that we've come up with. Three, the rough estimate of costs to the county for these proposed ideas. And four, the timeline in which they could be completed. Now, requirements of the county to the property as it sits right now are governed by the Oregon Department of Forestry, ODF. If there is no land use conversion filed with ODF, then the county has a maximum of two years to plant a monocrop to, a monocrop to reforest the land. Within six years, the trees that are planted have to reach what they call a free to grow status, which means that it is above the shrub and brush line and no longer needs human intervention to facilitate their growth. The clock for these deadlines has already begun ticking, which leaves us with fall of 2025 for the deadline for replanting and a fall of 2029 deadline for the trees to reach a free to grow status. After speaking with countless neighbors, concerned citizens and many local agencies, as well as the 2 CJ school district, I know that we must come up with a proposal for both the north and south sections that will be beneficial to all of our citizens. Hopefully your choice will benefit a disgruntled community with minimal extra cost to the county. For the much larger and marshy south section, there has been an overwhelming voice from the community that we just want our trees back. We rely on this area economically as it is part of the Oregon scenic byway. Thousands of tourists flock here every year to go to Blacklock and the Florist Lake State Park natural area for the scenic hikes and views. This has put a giant eyesore, not only for our local residents, but also the incoming tourists as well. I propose that instead of simply reforesting with a monocrop, we restore the natural habitat that was there and flourishing. This is a huge opportunity for our young people to show them not only what not to do, but also teach them how to repair a creek, how to restore a wetland, how to bring back wildlife, how to plant a diverse crop of native trees to include the Porterford cedar, pine, hemlock, fir, among others. This environment would facilitate gaining new skills for anyone wanting to go into conservation or forestry. I understand the OSU extension may also be interested, as well as several other agencies, in such an endeavor to teach our young people. The future possibilities for a jogging trail or an interpretive walkway for our students would keep the benefits of this land continuing for years and years to come. Simply reforesting, which is the minimum requirement of the county, is planting only a monocrop of trees that fit into the regulation of ODF. It doesn't do much for the habitat that had been there and does nothing for the rehabilitation of the creek or the wetland. Moving toward restoration is what would benefit the habitat, as well as provide invaluable insight and knowledge to our young people. To restore, instead of simply reforest, is what the neighbors were asking for. It will benefit and enlighten our students while restoring a rural area that has traveled annually because of its rugged forested beauty. ODF has stated we would need to file for an alternate practice in order to do this, so it is possible. Moving on to the much smaller north section, I have been in extensive talks with the principal and the superintendent of the 2 CJ school district. And I believe we have come up with a plan that would most benefit the district, but most importantly, benefit our students. Last year, our district hired four brand new teachers who all accepted positions. And then subsequently, they had to turn down those positions because they couldn't find adequate housing in our area. Depending on DEQ, I do believe that three to four units for housing could be placed on the north section. The school district would lease the property for a dollar for 100 years or whatever terms are set forth by the county for the sole purpose of employee housing. The school district would not seek to profit from this housing as most of the rent would go back into the maintenance of the facilities and the grounds. If a teacher quits or gets fired or retires, they would be required to vacate the home to make room for an incoming employee. Our students are suffering, our educators are suffering because of this inability to find housing. Four teachers missing in a school district of our size is a monumental deficit. I have spoken to three separate agencies and foundations that are interested in funding the housing portion of this proposal for the 2 CJ school district. I believe several more organizations may be interested as well as Oregon's housing crisis only continues to grow. A land use conversion would have to go through ODF to achieve this, therefore stopping the replanting requirement of the north section. The tree stumps, however, would have to be removed and then burned or taken away before the infrastructure and development could begin under the school district supervision. The initial profit for the county, the numbers that I've heard from this clear cut are around $200,000. Out of that $200,000, as it sits right now, you are responsible for replanting at a minimum. I have called and garnered estimates for this proposed project, as well as the minimum replanting requirement. So to reforest both sections and burn the slash of both sections, the estimate is $81,000. To restore the wetland, plant a variety of trees, burn the slash, remove the Gorse of the south section, the estimate was $84,000. To dig out the stumps of the north section is a rough estimate of $9,500. So for a total rough estimate for the proposal on both sides, both sections, $93,500. For those of you who don't want to do any math, the difference between the monocrop, which is required or the acceptance of this proposal is about $12,500. Now onto the timeline. These things have already begun to slip away. The proposed timeline is right now, we need to be ordering trees. Native trees, pine, Porterford cedar, fir, et cetera. In the summer of 2024, have the stumps removed from the north section and piled into slash piles. If you add plastic to the piles, it does help facilitate the burning later on. You don't burn the plastic. It just keeps a dry spot in there. In the late fall of 2024, burn all the slash and stump piles, preferably on a non-school day to spare our kids of all the smoke. Also in late of 20, uh, fall of 2024, we'd lease the north section to the school district so they can begin the district housing project. In the spring of 2025, have a wetland restoration crew and have the students come in to rehabilitate the creek and the grounds and have the tree planting crew come in to plant the diverse crop of trees that were ordered from the year prior. In the early summer of '26, '27, '28, '29 and '30, have the crew that planted the trees come in to mechanically remove shrubs from the planted trees and spray or physically remove the Gorse that may be popping up in the area. The crew may not need to come every year, but I did try to plan for the worst case scenario. I urge the commissioners that if you go with this proposal, to also use as many local contractors as possible in these endeavors to involve the local community and provide benefit to the residents of North County. To recap, I am proposing teacher housing in conjunction with the 2 CJ school district and a restoration versus reforesting of the land with educational outreach for students and possible future use of trail and interpretive walkways. The county at a minimum must pay to replant the monocrop of trees within two years. Costs around $81,000. For the south section, restoring the beautiful watershed and the wildlife near the scenic corridor that draws thousands of tourists every year would cost around $84,000. A unique opportunity to protect our children's welfare by leasing the north section to the 2 CJ school district would allow them to fully staff the district, which in turn will enrich our children's lives with a stump removal estimate of $9,500. The cost difference between doing the bare minimum, which will not benefit the county, the school district, the habitat or any of the residents of North County versus the ideas put forth in this proposal is an estimated $12,500. So there is quite a large list. This, these are the other ideas. Large list of proposed ideas that I have fielded and tried to find viability in and how realistic they were in the past several months. I'm going to list some of them. A Walmart, Olive Garden. Yeah. Yeah. These are, these are real ideas. Hotel to support the incoming golf course, strip mall, restaurants, a casino, an RV park, a 70 unit apartment complex, a swimming pool, recreational facility, gymnasium for the school. Now, as fun as a lot of these ideas are, I was all about the gym for the school. The issues with these are septic approval, funding, maintenance after funding, zoning and legality. So for those of you who don't know, it is actually illegal to build a casino within a certain distance of a school or residences. A daycare or a YMCA facility was also brought up. I do believe that would have been more viable before the clear cut happened because now we are against a time constraint as well as money issues. I want to thank you for your time and your honest consideration of this very important project, for your constituents, the students, the wildlife and the economy of North Curry County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. I, I wish we always had as thorough and complete a presentation and that was, that was awesome. And before I forget, can you email that to Revia?
Yes. I have hard copies for you too. I just don't want you guys to be distracted reading while I was reading.
But if you could email it to her, we have, we have that as well.
Okay. Do I answer questions or is it?
That's what I want to ask Jay. Do you have, you have question discussion?
I don't necessarily have questions, more comments. So being on the 17C school board. Oh yeah, sorry. It's, I don't think that's actually projecting anything.
I don't think those work. So.
Hello? Okay. I know the severe need for teacher housing, workforce housing. I mean, it's convenient that it would be across from the school for teacher housing. And so I, I am a giant proponent of ideas like that. One potential opportunity for, for, for funding such a project has come to us in the last two weeks. So the, you know, the governor had just approved a $500 million housing projects budget, to which we were, we were asked to provide three of our top housing projects to be considered in the next session for approval. So this is one of those that could certainly fill that, fill that, fill that bill, right? And assist with some of the, the, the funding needed to, to, to finish this project and provide adequate housing, hopefully, to, 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 to bring new teachers to the school district. So I just wanted to bring that now. One of the things we'd have to navigate is if it's one of those scenarios where the county works with the developer to get those things done, to get the funding, and then says, all right, 2C, you guys are going to manage it. You're going to lease it to it from us for whatever and, and knock it out of the park. So that's one piece of the pie that we'd have to navigate. But I, I definitely see it as a viable and productive option.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of ways that potentially could do that. One is depending on what the state would stay, would say about that funding opportunity and whether or not they would get behind that.
Well.
Would determine how we would proceed forward. But the other way would be to do some type of a lease with the school district, you know.
Sure.
Minimal lease.
Right.
And then they, and then they would proceed with it.
Right. It's just if, 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 if they're not, if they're, if they're not, if they aren't applicable to get to the funding and the county is, then it makes sense to take this road to get that funding so that we can build it and then, and then let them manage it with that. But appreciate all the work you did. This was very, very detailed. And it seems like, you know, you, you put in a lot of back, you know, work on this. And it's, it's, as you said, I think it's the, one of the better scenarios out of the hand we've dealt, been dealt, right? So thank you for that.
Yeah, what we might be able to do on that Jay is split this up into two, two categories with that, that one section we could set aside until we know what the funding source would be for potential housing. And then the other one, we could proceed forward because that seems more time sensitive in terms of replanting or how we proceed with that. So we can, we can separate those two out, maybe put, put one on hold till we know more about the, the funding for housing and then proceed forward with the time sensitive portion of how that's planned. John comments? Questions?
I gotta tell you, Ashley, your, your dad and your granddad, who I delivered to for 30 years.
Thanks. Thanks. Thank you.
I, I don't really, I think you hit, you hit the nail on the head and you did a great job. And I don't care what everybody else says and I don't have anything to add to that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. All right. Now we'll move forward to public comments. Again, I'd ask you to stay with the, within your three minute time period. And I'm just going to go with the cards as they are sitting here. So the one on the top is Brett Cecil. Come on up Brett.
I don't think they're even on.
Talk loud.
Good evening, commissioners and citizens of Port Orford. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you coming to our little hamlet here on the north end of the county. I really appreciate, appreciate Ashley putting this together. I remember sitting through quite a number of county commissioners' meetings where this project was discussed. And honestly, I don't remember exactly how it was left out, but there was a contract signed for that timber to be taken. I was not surprised to see any of that was cut. I know a lot of my, my neighbors were surprised to see that that had happened, but I know the contract had been in place for some time. One of my concerns that I want to express this evening about how that's going to move forward is what's going to be done with the slash. Cause I recall in the contract, in section 14, under the heading of treatment of slash, the purchaser chooses or has the choice of a Woody biomass removal option. I would like to encourage heavily that the commissioners look at that before you start burning all of that. I've lived in Port Orford now, coming up on seven years. And I've lived in the county, but down here in town, I used to live up the hill, but lived here in town. And I can't recall days during the summer even that we haven't had smoke from people just burning in their yards. We live in the 21st century. I think we must have a way to dispose of these things in a way other than lighting a fire like a caveman. So I encourage you strongly, again, like I said, to consider the biomass removal. Some of that could even be chipped and used for ground cover in some of the, the process that Ashley's outlined about replanting. I think that could be used well. And many of us here that live in town probably would use that in some of our, our gardening efforts. It would help a lot with drought protection and protecting our gardens and adding to the, the soil that we have in our own gardens. So thank you again for coming and for listening to my statement this evening.
Thank you Brett. And next up is Quinn Allen.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Quinn Allen. I work for Oregon Department of Forestry as a stewardship forester. I cover the majority of Curry County. I am just going to speak a couple of things for some clarification and I'm going to leave my business cards. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out, call me, email me, text me, maybe don't text me. But so for reforestation, we, Ashley, we've, we've talked before. We covered the base of our minimum expectations of trees in the ground, first slash needs dealt with. We don't really have any kind of specifics on how you remove that slash, burn it, remove it, chip it. We don't care. Get rid of it so you can get trees in the ground. Ashley mentioned monoculture. That's kind of the typical way that most people reforest their land. Douglas fir trees are the most inexpensive to replace in the ground. But really in our rules and it's ORS 6296100050, it speaks to acceptable species for reforestation. And it's really just kind of any native species that you can get. So every proposed species that Ashley mentioned would be acceptable under ODF standards. We also have a trees per acre standard that we have. So it would be 200 trees per acre that we would expect to be reforested on the land use conversion side, anywhere that the land use is not converted, needs to be reforested. It's pretty easy to space your trees out so you can get your interpretive areas in there. And as far as a free to grow status, brush control is required for six years or until the trees reach that free to grow status where we're not competing any kind of invasive vegetation. Gorse being our biggest concern as well. Um, and really that was kind of all I was going to speak to. Again, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to reach out. I can provide information on the written plans as well. That was put for, put together. Everything for ODF's side of things was under compliance for any kind of, you know, resource protection at the time that the operation was performed. Everything was under compliance at the time. So any other questions, please feel free to give me a call.
Thanks Quinn. And next up is Kimberly Foster.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Foster. As you said, I live in North County on Nap Road. Thank you for coming here. I know it's quite the trek to get up to Port Orford, especially at night in the middle of the winter. First off, yeah, I want to take a step back and say that I personally believe in finding silver linings. And the one thing I've observed that's come out of this whole thing is that this sort, this ordeal has kind of become an instrument that has helped awaken all of your fine constituency. Here are the taxpayers to the fact that we are the shareholders in the company that we call North County, right? And as shareholders, it's up to each and every one of us to ensure that our shared resources are not abused. It is up to us to decide how the county should invest in our neighborhoods. It is our right and our duty to make sure this county is run correctly. It may not look like it, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a business meeting, right? As I have to say, Ashley Moore's proposal, I couldn't help but observe that the important task of investigating practical solutions to the problems facing these county wood parcels has fallen to a taxpayer. Who has clearly undertaken the considerable duty of doing the research groundwork, interviews and due diligence that the previous commission probably should have embarked to complete before the clear cut was approved and executed. And so with that context, I commend her for her commitment to finding a way forward that is both realistic and honors the needs of the neighbors and children alike. That's no easy task. And I just want to say for this public service, she deserves our respect. That said, I would like to voice my full enthusiastic support for her well researched and thoughtful proposal and reiterate that we must act quickly to beat the coming infestation of highly flammable gorse. We need native trees and seeds ordered. We need to remove those stumps, burn the slash piles or do something else with them. Restore the south section, lease the north to the school district for teacher housing. We have a responsibility to our children to restore their inheritance. You, the board, have a chance to do the right thing. Hold yourselves accountable for their future and invest in their education as a priority, which might be the best long-term economic investment we could ever make together for this county. I look forward to seeing how the board turns this tragedy into something that makes a really positive impact in North Curry County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kimberly. Clark, you're next.
I'm not, I'm not even gonna try. I will, I will absolutely murder it.
I understand.
Or can't, right?
Uh, close enough. Starts with a K. Good evening, commissioners. Nice to see you in Port Orford again. My name is Clark Kosurik. I also live on Nap Road and I'm grateful for you making the trek up here. I will not need the whole three minutes because any ideas that I would have proposed are pale in comparison to what Captain Ashley Moore has just presented to you. I did want to revisit the idea of proper restoration versus a monoculture. To replant with a diverse and healthy forest requires more than one species. Nature does not have monocultures. That's just not how it works. So as you consider options to pursue, I think that the nominal price differential between replanting with a monoculture versus a properly restored habitat with diverse species is a, is a pretty much no brainer in terms of actually making that into land that is healthy, fire resilient and is able to crowd out things like gorse. As far as the teacher housing, I think that's a wonderful proposal. If we want to attract more young working age families to North County, education is a major consideration for people when they decide where to live. Teacher to student ratio is one of the most important factors in determining the quality of a child's education. And I think that having some format of teacher housing across from the high school, whether it's through the county or through the 2C J school district would be a wonderful boon to our local economy, education system and the future of North County. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Clark. Anne, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Velisis, 608 Oregon Street in Port Orford. I am a city councillor in Port Orford, but tonight I'm speaking with a different hat and that is as president of the Calmeopsis Audubon Society. Our group has over 400 members in Curry County from Brookings through Langloes who are concerned about wildlife habitat and good land use planning. And like everyone else, I really want to thank you first for coming up here, you know, to Port Orford to check in with North Curry citizens about the future of this land. And I call it the Pacific High Forest. Your openness to listen and communicate really means a lot to people up here. And I think if we had more Curry County B O Cs that did that, we would have so much more success. So I really, from my heart, thank you. I've been engaged actually with this land for many years through many B O Cs, through the land swap that gave this land to the county. And through the years, I can tell you, many positive ideas were put forth for ways that this land could benefit the county. And always I think it was assumed that, you know, like a little piece of the land would have been carved out from the forest. So some of those ideas could have been pursued rather than to have the whole thing clear cut. But at this point, what's important is moving forward with the absolutely best possible future for this place. And for that reason, we strongly support the excellent proposal put forward by our local resident and community leader, Ashley Moore. As she mentioned, the land is owned public facility. And so if the north parcel can be used in conjunction with Pacific High leased to the school district or however you want to do it to provide some teacher housing, that would provide a tremendous benefit to our entire North County community and our school district. So it would just be so helpful. And I want to mention too, that the highest appraised value for that land was for housing. And with the current housing crisis and opportunities, like you mentioned, Mr. Tost, there's, it's really a good time to possibly get grant funding for this proposal. And if the south parcel can be restored to a forested state, that will help the county comply with forest laws. And most important, it will help to prevent the takeover of this land by the highly flammable gorse. And I can't tell you how many times we tried to explain to the Curry B O C that in North County, growing and retaining forests is one of the very best ways to avoid and to control gorse. Ideally, the new forest will be made up of diverse trees with special care to the edge of the stream that flows through. And in this future, the forested land could become a tremendous asset for the school, an outdoor lab where kids could learn, where there could be perhaps a running track for the track team or a nature trail, or perhaps someday additional facilities. But for now, moving ahead with teacher housing on the north parcel and restoring the forest on the south is just the most sensible way to comply with the law, reduce fire risk and also to provide an important benefit for our community. For decades, I hate to say it, but the Curry B O C has pushed unrealistic ideas for the North Curry without coming to talk to citizens. Ms. Moore has put forward a practical and sensible proposal that I think everyone can get behind. And so I urge you to move forward with it. And I'm also, one of our members, he sent me an article about teacher housing, other places needing to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Aaron Miller.
Good evening. I also would like to reiterate a big thank you for joining us here in Port Orford. My name's Aaron Miller. I'm a resident of Port Orford. I am also the superintendent of schools and the elementary principal. So first off, I want to thank Ashley also. Done a great job putting together a proposal. Three minutes is a short time for me. So what I'm going to say is brief. We would stand ready to be able to help in terms of students and our C T E programs with the larger parcel, putting together some sort of nature trail, tying it in with forestry. All of those ideas put forth are things that we could support at this time. The parcel for teacher housing is an idea that I've had for our own property. We have a number of acres at that high school site. And then when this idea came about, that made a lot more sense in terms of the viability of the project, the partnership between the, the county, the potential partnership, not just for teacher housing, but for, for county, public government housing, affordable housing, because all of our agencies are having trouble with workforce issues. We've got county, we've got city, we've got soil and water conservation, we've got state parks, we have a number of people that have trouble attracting people to work those lower paying jobs in terms of professions and being able to have a place to stay and live and then continue to be a part of our community. I think that, that discussion is one that we definitely want to be a part of. If there's a way that it can be leased and we're able to find the funding, grant support to put housing there and have that be there for our teachers and our workforce, I'm all for that. I am not the only decision maker. I can be, but sometimes I have, take the risk of being fired. So I'm not going there. It's a board decision, as you know, just like your commissioners. We have a board that would be making many of those decisions as well. These things take time. We're talking about a couple of different bureaucracies. So I think time is of the essence to get started and have the discussions, see if they bear fruit. But we as a district are ready to support this idea for the, the nature trail and the work together with our student programs. And we're definitely in support of looking how that other piece would work. But there's a lot of moving parts with that that make that a more difficult project, but one that could really be beneficial for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Palmer.
Hello, I'm Tim Palmer. I live at 608 Oregon Street here in Port Orford. How do, how do you know that? So like others here, I was, I felt personally aggrieved at what happened out here. The, when the commissioners first began to consider what to do with that parcel, I came to the commissioner meeting, you remember, John? I had done a plan for the area. I presented it. The, it involved a nature trail and the, the site that the road department wanted to use and, and other features and with opportunities for cooperation with the school district and so forth. And Commissioner Boyce congratulated me. He said, asked if I would like to be a part of planning in further detail. And I said, yes. And he assigned it to the county planner. And the next thing I knew, I had been gone away on a work trip for a week and I came down Highway 101 and saw this scene of total destruction. So I think we all know that was a mistake. I hope this board has learned not to do anything like that again in other places. And I want to commend you on your willingness to move ahead here with this wonderful plan that's been presented. And with hopes that we can just, we can't correct the mistakes of the past, but with hopes that we can move on for a future for this site that, that will be beneficial to everybody. So thank you.
Next up is Bob Morrow.
Bob Morrow, 47606 Fern Ridge Road, Langloes. You're going to get tired of hearing, "Thank you."
Never.
Never. Well, yeah, and it will be nice to you too. So thank you, commissioners, for coming to North Curry County for this workshop. I would encourage you to make it a habit, say quarterly. It might help you to better understand that what is important in North Curry County may differ from, say, Brookings in South Curry County. One size does not fit all. It is unfortunate that the last board did not have a long-term vision for the now clear cut property. It was pristine and offered a myriad of ways to generate a steady cash flow for the county. Instead, it is an eyesore for locals and the tourists who come to view the iconic state park headlands of Oregon. And all for 110 grand when it's all replanted and then a 40-year wait to do it again. I support Ms. Moore's proposal. Avoiding a replanted monoculture should be a minimum standard for the south lot if you have a long eye for the future. Organizations contacted, considered it an opportunity to create an educational platform for our children and programs from around the state. The usage of the north lot is a brilliant idea. Housing dedicated to educators of our children, that would be magnificent. There are grants for such things, as we've heard. If you lease the land for, say, $500 a month, just throwing numbers out, you would earn back 110K that you spent in half the time and you'd still have a forest. And you'd have a little bit of a cash flow. Every penny helps. It could also be accounted for as a credit on your budget sheet. The need for this thinking on housing, however, is a direct result of the uncapped short-term rental policy adopted by the county that has all but eliminated rentals for locals. Slow this process down by placing an annual cap on the number you accept each year. The south portion could be, is another idea, hasn't come out, leased to a solar company to manage contracts typically run 30 to 40 years and let them deal with the gorse. It might be worth a conversation with Kuz Curry to see if the lines in the area could carry a load generated by 20 acres of solar panels. My dog suggested it become a huge dog park. This parcel was acquired in a land swap with the state parks. You should do that again with the unusable acreage that the county owns at the south end of Floris Lake. If you owned McVeigh Park in Brookings, for example, you could establish another source of steady cash flow for the county. Or there may be state park land elsewhere, which they would be willing to swap with the expectation that it would be logged. We need to keep the tourist corridor along Highway 101, looking like the Wild Rivers Coast that we've been advertising. Otherwise, it's just not cool to be here. To reiterate, the proposal you heard this evening would be my first option on how to move forward with the property on Airport Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Next up is Dave Bassett.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for coming to Port Orford. I live just outside the city of Port Orford, but I have two hangers at the airport. So I go out Airport Road quite often. And I was last involved for the county on the 65 acre triangular piece that you just have to the east of the airport. John Irwin did that report and he concluded, at least at this time, that eco-tourism was a appropriate use. Long-term, probably not. It's very, very, very heavily infested with gorse, represents a fire hazard. I have learned how you get rid of gorse in my flunking retirement days here. I keep finding properties that need to be rehabbed. And the only way to get rid of gorse is to die and not take it with you. So given, given that, you can shade it out and you can do other things with it. Steal one of these cards here. What I wanted to do was to share with you some of the things that I remember from the 65 acres. If this ground is at all similar, it has a Koichi hardpan layer, which makes, makes a package plant for shurage probably necessary. And there's not dependable water. The, the well at the airport has been kind of iffy for many, many years. That's not to say that these things can't be solved. I certainly commend Ashley for her forward thinking and, and for her presentation. And I'm very much in support of the portion that is the Pacific High rehabed forest. It's unfortunate that it had to get so ugly in order to get rehabbed, but it is what it is. Looking at the portion for housing for teachers, if that ends up being the property of, of the high school and Aaron is involved, here's some things that have to happen. You're going to need a master plan. You'll need probably several design professionals. A landscape architect would be a great start where you have that ability to take into account the sun angles, the topography, the soil conditions and to set something in motion. This particular piece here, this 5.5 acres, is pretty much the same size and configuration as the new subdivision on the north side of Gold Beach sits up on the hill. Except that, that facility has city services. This doesn't. So if you're going to make any kind of density to make this at all to the point where people could afford it, you're going to need some packaged plants for shurage and something probably for water. for water treatment as well. People like the RenCo, I know that Jay is familiar with the RenCo over in Sutherland, but there's a lot of legwork between where you are right now and making that a housing facility for teachers. So just, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but that's the engineer in me that says these are things that you gotta take a look at. So I thank you for being here, and I thank Ashley for the great ideas, and there's no such thing as a bad idea.
Thank you, Duke.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, I'm gonna say this name wrong.
I think it's Pauline.
Pauline?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
I want to echo everyone else's thank you for being here. At my age, which is 70, I rarely leave Port Orford except to go to the doctor. And even when I was, I've been here over 30 years, even when I was a lot younger, I didn't go to Gold Beach very often. So thank you so much for being here. And my deep thanks to Ashley for everything you've done. I'm just so impressed. The two comments, I signed up not knowing if I was gonna talk or not. I figured I better not lose my chance. A question about something you said in your comment. You talked about the two-year clock running on the two parcels as if it was different. We could hold on the north and move forward with the, you know, more urgent south. I didn't understand that. To me, it seems like it's the same two-year clock on the whole thing, on both of them. So I don't know if you could explain that or if I'm just out of line, but I was really confused by that.
So, let me take this?
Go ahead.
So in order to move forward on the north parcel, we would need to rezone that from its current zoning, which then stopped the clock because it wouldn't be under the Department of Forestry at that point.
Okay.
Right? So and then the the bottom part would remain that way.
Okay. I guess I was I was thinking they goes back to the
No.
And you're right, there could be a parent.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And by doing that, it would allow us to go forward right away.
Yes, okay. Thank you. The other comment I want to make was to Brett at our rather more contentious first meeting down at the library, where I spoke several times and kind of made a fool of myself. I was very gung ho on on shredding and using and and it was immediately pointed out, I grew up by Ashley or some other wise citizen who I should have known better, but the gorse seeds in it, Brett, would make that, first of all, a possible
Spread.
danger, as I understand it, just even going down the highway to its new home, but also completely useless for gardening-type activities.
You'd have gorse in your garden.
So I just wanted to bring that up. And I guess beyond that, I I just totally, it was probably obvious, but it wasn't in my notes, I really, I didn't know that Ashley's proposal until we noticed for this rescheduled meeting came out. And I was here, by the way, here for the last one, because I don't know if you announced it on Facebook or what, I've got five people here wondering where the meeting was, till I finally got out and read the six pieces of paper and said, oh, okay, it's not happening. But anyway, so I I was excited to hear that such a proposal existed, and I really seriously hope that you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. And and I apologize for you coming here and 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 waiting. We obviously, there were some flooding issues, and it was really important to me. Ultimately, I had to make that decision. It was really important to me that everybody could be here. I know there was some road blockage, and some people may not have been able to make it, and I thought it would just be better served if we had
I completely understand that. I just don't understand how the word got out, because there were five of us.
And I apologize for the
And we went running down to the library, see, well, maybe they moved it there. No, no rain, run back here. Anyway, that's when I finally got out and looked at the door, so thank you.
I apologize.
No, it's okay, you know, it happens.
Next up is Cynthia Freeman.
I just want to commend everyone that spoke, and Ashley, I know your dad, and my dog is in love with her father. I say that because I drive a couple times a day to walk my dog in the nature center, and I pass that area. I used to be a teacher for years, and I thought, oh, my God, I can't believe what happened to this area, these poor people. And every time I drive through it, see, my heart is still back on the whole clear cut. And I know there's some really great ideas that have been floated by Ashley, wonderful, and everyone else. And then I thought about, what about the kids? Okay, you're looking out, I taught high school, looking out, and you're looking at that. It's never gonna be the same. Restoration, that's a great idea, it's gonna take years, I'll be dead by the time that really looks anything approaching what it was. But and I think about myself, and I think about tourism, and that's what we've got here. That's what Port Orford has, that's what we offer largely. And to take a corridor, a section like that, that is highly visible, it just devastated. I wish Court Boyce was in this room right now. I used to live in Brookings, I've been on the coast for 10 years. I sat in city council meetings with him, and the fact that he asked Tim Palmer to be part of it and then just, it just happens, it's, I can't believe where it happened. I used to go there all the time with my dog. I used to run in black lock. I will not go down there. I cannot even fathom just riding down this. So if I sound upset, I And I really feel for the people who winload, that's enormous for your homes, and just the visual itself. And Ted Fitzgerald made these comments at the last meeting, I listened to it and said, trees, you won't miss them, they grow back. Well, I miss those trees. I'm sure all the residents miss those trees. My dog misses those trees. I don't know what compelled Court Boyce to go ahead. I saw it's a signature all over the place, and I just wish we could have to say, whatever people, I've been here for five, four years, and what I've learned from this place is there are a lot of very smart, really knowledgeable, very educated people in here. And I just want to reiterate what someone said. He said basically that at a commission meeting about something else, and he said, you work for us. We don't, we're gonna fix this, and I will volunteer my time planting with the kids, that's my background in restoration biology. I just, my heart is still back on that mess. Every time, my mother said to me, she had, she said, if something really bothers you, sleep on it. Still bothers you, you're gonna miss it. I was planning on sleeping, but I didn't, I just I just want you to know that you matter. I lived in Brookings for five years, like I said, I taught in the high school. And so I know kids, I know the community, and this would never have happened. Not only would it, but it wouldn't have. The Court Boyce isn't here to hear any of this. He should be here, and I hope he listens loud and clear that the people of Port Orford deserve better than you. So anyway, thanks, everyone. I just have lots of great ideas, are better than I had some of those, but, well, just coming here, I realized I was gonna move from Port Orford, and when I saw that clear cut, I thought, now I really do gotta move. But listening to the people here, I'm just really proud of the residents. I don't know if I wanna pull this room. I've interacted with a few people walking my dog on the beach, and what I'm really impressed with at Port Orford is the willingness to come together, unlike Brookings, by the way, a willingness to come together, maybe because we're small and work on projects. We had a little parade, you know, just a few months ago, and I thought, wow, what a cool community of people that care about each other. This town does care, so don't discount us and make decisions. You can go back and tell Court, you know, these people care, and we're gonna clean up your mess, basically. It's gonna happen. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Yeah.
Okay, I might say this wrong. Ulrich?
I did, okay. Yeah, I can hear that. Good evening, Commissioners, citizens, thank you again for your great suggestions. I think this shows really good aspect, kind of best utilized property, maybe those suggestions on the housing part, you know, make sure they could have a little south-facing side. Be good for them all to have an access area, maybe common ground where they can be, sit outside. I mean, who knows if that gets that far? On the, I have a question on the Pacific High Forest, when you mentioned DQ has some limitations, is there a chance perhaps to have like a rec center or a small in the northeast section, or would that be?
So
Go ahead.
Okay, so without taking test polls, you can't tell for sure, but I know I've walked out there, it's very marshy, and when things are very marshy, DQ really doesn't want you to put a septic in at all. Like, sometimes it's not even a viable option. So in those cases, they could have you put in like a 5,000-gallon holding tank, and you have to have it pumped out when it's full. So nothing goes into a marshy area. I think the part that is closest to Airport Road towards the high school, not getting tried with directions right now, would probably be the most viable, but it would probably have to be a smaller one. Anything that is like a rec center or something would be a commercial system. Those systems not only are expensive to install, anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000, not exaggerating, but also a lot of those, especially if it's a WPCF classification, you have to pay to maintain it every month, which is $5,000 to $15,000 a year. So that's why I said a lot of the ideas are really great, but funding's an issue, and the maintenance after we get it, funding is also an issue.
All right. I'm gonna scratch that suggestion, and I think your nature field, having some kids in the I propose that. So we have two kids going to UCJ at the moment, and I think they really appreciate that having that area redeveloped. And if you can plant some cedar trees or something along 101, that'd be nice to, I mean, hide the, you'd be the icebreaker at the moment, that's maybe just the budplanting that now hit the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last card is Susan.
Repeated thank you. My name is, I'm better known as Zan Crawford, downtown. I live at 38 Highway 101. I absolutely support everything that Ashley's done, it has so well researched, my ideas and concept, but it supports hers in that it provides tremendous amount of funding. This, I suggest a Green burial memorial park. One acre would generate approximately $1 to $2 million for the county just in selling the plots, and you contract out the services to a professional green mortuary. But it immediately, you sell plots, I'd buy one right now. See, it's, this is a retirement town for a large part, and there's no place for us to go when we're gone. And everyone who goes into that land would be planted with a tree. And it would recreate recreate a forest, and I would suggest that Ashley choose an acre or two where that would be viable, it would work very well with her project, because it could fund it and so much more. It could wipe out a portion of the county's debt. And the nearest green memorial park is up in Eugene. They are legal, they are encouraged, there's no poison in the ground, there are no coffins except liquor which recycles into the ground, and you become a tree. And that it, that seems a very viable way to go. We could, it would cut down the cost of burial tremendously as well. And we're not a rich community, I don't know, but we could pre-plant that, and it would fit in with her ideas very well, put in the proper place. That's my idea. And if you want more information on it, I would suggest looking at greenburialcouncil.com. They have a great deal of information, can direct you to a lot of other resources.
Green burial council?
Average plot, it costs between $500 and $5,000. You can fit 700 to 1,000 plots in one acre. Do the math. That's ju, that's just pure profit for the county.
You just dig a hole and
You have a mortuary, properly prepare their body, usually wrapped in linen. You can or don't have to
I'm trying to picture this in my mind.
You're allowed to plant yourself on your own land, you know. You should follow the rules, and you get a permit. Yes, you could be
I dig the hole and die and fall in?
Six feet deep, and you have a permit from the city. Yes, you can in the state of Oregon. Look, yeah.
It's true.
Rather be in a memorial park, but if you don't do that, I'm gonna be planted on my own land. So it's just a really viable idea. I tossed it around with, I know a lot of old ladies in this town. And we're forward-thinking, and it really lowers the carbon footprint that we're putting out there. You don't have to burn, you don't have to have a mortuary that stinks, you know, it's all about giving back to the environment and making a money, money train for Ashley's great ideas. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes public comments. We have discussion action items on them, 5A, which A through, well, all of them pretty much are more historical than anything. I'll just go through them. Any, is there any discussion on the airport property itself?
No.
How about the September 20th agenda routing slip that we have in the package? Any discussion on that, John? The Airport Road deed, anything on that?
Yep.
Jay? And our zoning ordinance information, any need for discussion on that?
I see that.
And then do we want to go over any of the zoning images we have on 34? No? All good? Okay. So what happens now is we will kind of take this information, digest it. I do wanna, Susan, I want to look at what you recommended, do a little bit of research on that, and and then we'll take Ashley's proposal. There's probably some questions from our legal counsel on kind of how everything would look. And then, once we get kind of an assessment on whether there's any more detailed questions, which would probably come from the legal counsel side of things, then we will put this on one of our BOC meetings to actually vote and make a decision on. And obviously, we'll put that out, we'll broadcast that out on our website, on social media and everything, and Ashley will make contact with you so you know what's going on as well, and you can help get that message out to folks. But that is, that is our plan moving forward. Again, I want to thank Port Orford, the city, for letting us use your facilities. And thank you, everyone, for coming. We really do need to have, I wish we could have more of this in other parts of the county as well. This is, this is what helps guide me. You know, my problem-solving philosophy is what do the people want? Is it legal? Is it within policy? And ethically, is it the right thing to do? And and I like to answer those questions before I make any decisions. So thank you again. If there's no further discussion, guys, then we will adjourn the meeting.
I just would like to throw a sorry, Fred is ready to go. I just want to comment on everybody's, first of all, thoughtful, thoughtful presentations today, when you took your your time allotted. And you know, these are the types of meetings that make a big difference. And, you know, Ashley, again, thank you for putting together your presentation. And I do all want to also acknowledge that it, you know, it does take courage to come up here and say these things, but I think maybe more than one of you had mentioned, you are 100% correct. We, we work for you, right? And that's like, that's the kind of government that I want to be involved in. And so that's, I'm glad that that is being reiterated and discussed in in these meetings because that's how it was designed, you know? And so thank you for, for continuing to remind people in these, in these roles that, what their obligation is. And so I would, I would advocate that we continue to encourage to reiterate this, to And so, I would, I would advocate that we continue to encourage to reiterate this to individuals in these, in these seats going forward. So, thank you again for all of your thoughtful comments and I think some really, really, really good and forward-thinking ideas came out of this meeting. So, thank you again.
Agreed. Yep. We will put this meeting online as soon as Natasha gets all the technical things on. So if, if you know somebody that couldn't be here or was curious about the meeting, they can go to the website and watch it. All right, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.